Hey, welcome to the podcast, uh, chief? Could you do me a solid by rating and reviewing this on iTunes? It really helps with our visibility. Or recommend us to one of your friends? You do have friends, right? Cool. Thank you. Welcome to City Council Chronicles. Somewhere out there, a city council meeting is happening, and you're not watching it, but I am. I'm Michael Karlik, and you're listening to the City Council Chronicles Podcast. For city council meeting reviews, visit councilchronicles.com. Hey, did you happen to catch the special episode where I visited Rockville, Maryland, and asked, "What is the best thing about this place? And what is the worst thing about this place?" If you missed it, take a look back at the podcast. You can also find my Best Thing/Worst Thing episodes for Cheyenne, Wyoming, and Castle Rock, Colorado. On this episode, I talk to Lee's Summit Missouri Councilmember Chris Moreno. Now, listen, I invite people on the podcast, and then I find out what's going on in their city council meetings. It's not the other way around. So, just before this interview, I was researching the Lee's Summit city council meetings, and what I found was disturbing.
People hide behind their pen and call us clowns? Well, maybe we are. I took an oath, and I'm proud to be a clown when I see this kind of thing.
...should be united, and I hope in 2017, something comes that we reunite, because this is just getting ridiculous.
Serious and deep concern about the city council's recent public and private conduct, lack of mutual respect, blatant rude and insensitive behavior.
Seriously, people, it's a very sad day indeed. Don't laugh. I've never been in a place, I'm very sad.
I just want to say that I'm glad that those people who have spoken tonight are sorry for the chaos they have caused.
I would like for Mr. Mosby to resign also. He has lied to my face in this very room.
For the past eight months, Lee's Summit City Council has been rocked by angry public commenters, strong personalities, unethical behavior, and, well, bad judgment. Oh, and one of them is getting recalled. For one account of what the heck's going on in the show-me state, stay tuned. And there is some lighter stuff in here, too. The music is by bensound.com. Councilmember, any ding dong with a podcast can start off by asking what happens in the council meetings. But I want to start off by asking what happens behind the council meetings. Specifically, in those doors that you walk into sometimes during the meeting or during the break in the meeting. What is in the room behind the council chamber? Is it a pinball machine? Is it one of those Brookstone full-body massage chairs? Or is it like a 90's sitcom where there's another city council back there, and you have to run back and forth because you're on a date with the both of them?
I wish that was the case. It's actually just a conference room that has a refrigerator and a bathroom. And so, there's water, lemonade, pop, and all those things.
Okay, are we talking an exotic kind of soda? Like a liter of Surge from 15 years ago?
No, it's your basics. It's actually Pepsi products and Pepsi Sprite, all that kind of stuff. I think the most exotic drink back there is like a green tea.
Well, I can believe that for Missouri, green tea is an exotic beverage. Now, on the day of the council meetings, what do you do to prepare? And I ask this seriously. Do you meditate? Do you eat a particular type of meal? Do you have a ritual?
That's an interesting question. You know, I actually just do a lot of studying. And for me, I get all my studying done usually a day or two before the meeting, unless the agenda changes. And then the day of the agenda, I actually just kind of do a lot of prayer and a lot of thinking about the agenda and the topic itself. And so, I play a lot of worship music throughout, you know, my breaks. So, even at work, when I take a break, you know, I play a lot of worship music, whether it's Kathy Crowe's or Carrie Jobe, or, you know, some of my favorite artists. And I just think about my day and the agenda.
Interesting. I've never heard anyone say they listened to worship music beforehand, but I can see how that would get you in the zone. Now, when you were first elected, did you have to do any orientation on how council meetings work?
Yeah, we did a council orientation, and it talked about not only just the process and procedure, but it went over some of the conflict of interest laws, sunshine laws, that kind of stuff.
Okay, and how to make a motion, and how to debate?
Yeah. Parliamentary procedure, yeah. Robert's Rules of Order, all that good stuff.
Right. Did you find it overwhelming, or did it click for you pretty quickly?
No, I kind of knew a lot of that anyway. And I was a debater in high school, so I kind of knew Robert's Rules of Order.
Uh-huh. Where did the debating team stand in the social hierarchy of your high school? Because I imagine, you know, you would be a little nervous that the other kids wouldn't like you, because, well, you like arguing.
Actually, I loved it. You know, I grew up playing, I was a basketball guy. I loved basketball. I played baseball and stuff, but I loved, loved basketball. I lived for it. And so, when I was introduced to debate, I kind of was like, no, this is not for me. But I quickly learned that it was something I just loved. I loved the challenge. I loved actually public speaking, you know? And I loved the people. I mean, they were just great. Everybody I met was so professional at such a young age. You know, I'm sure a lot of them have turned into really successful people.
Yeah, yeah. I had something similar for me, which is, I was in orchestra for many years, just out of habit. But midway through high school, I signed up to the school newspaper, and it was a lot more interesting to me and useful to me. So, I can see how you're doing something that you like, but then something else comes along, and you know that doing it is just better for you as a person.
Yeah, you know, I played, I was playing sports. My friends were kind of, you know, I loved them all. They're great people, but, you know, we weren't exactly straight-A students, you know? And so, to find this whole new world of folks that, you know, that were very caring, but they also, you know, took their books seriously, it really quite honestly changed my life, so.
Yeah. Have you ever watched any other cities' council meetings?
Uh, yeah, I've watched other city council meetings.
Do you remember which ones?
Well, I've watched previous council meetings, the previous council had in Lee's Summit. I've watched Blue Springs. I've watched Kansas City. I've watched, you know...
Oh, yeah, yeah, Blue Springs. I watched one of their council meetings, and I remember the mayor does this thing in the middle. It's Thoughts to Ponder, I guess he calls it, where he relates an anecdotal life lesson to the cameras. Do you remember him doing that?
I don't remember that, but...
Oh, well, yeah, it's just a cool thing he does. Having watched other cities' council meetings, then, can you think of something you've seen them do that you wish Lee's Summit would do at their council meetings?
Um, I would say, here's the thing is, Lee's Summit isn't a transition, okay? I believe that Lee's Summit is, this is the first, what I would call, big city council, okay? We've transitioned from a small town to now the fifth-largest city in the state of Missouri. And so, I think that a lot of their procedure is still based on that small-town mentality, where you have the administrative side that sets the agenda for the mayor and for the council, and they kind of just ram whatever they want through, or they choose to put things through committee if they want to, and it's kind of in the hands of the city manager. I don't believe that's effective for the people. I think it gives too much power to non-elected bureaucrats. And so, I believe that it's time for Lee's Summit to take the examples of more of your bigger cities, St. Louis, Kansas City, where you have an actual committee process. So, if the administration wants something, they can bring it to the council. The council will then send it to a committee, much like you do with the state legislative side or the county legislative side.
So, if I were to rephrase your answer, it would be, city council members should have more power, right?
Well, I don't think council members should have more power. I think the people should have more power. And I think the council members are just reflective of the people. Past city councils have been heavily reliant on the administrative branch, city manager's office, to do the legislative process. Well, that's not what it's meant to do. It's meant to handle personnel. So, if they want something addressed in the city, it should come to the council. The council should decide what committee it goes through, and then it should start the process from there. The other thing is that things should be in writing. So, for example, when I make a request for trash hauler accountability, right, to be addressed by this council, I should have to be able to put that in a formal writing, what I am hoping to accomplish, and then have that go through the process. Whereas, right now, it's just like, hey, I would like to address this because this is why. Well, it gets sent to a committee, and it gets addressed in a whole new way, a whole different way. That wasn't even my original intent.
Okay, so it's more about accountability for you. Got it. Now, your first city council meeting was in May of 2016. That wasn't that long ago, so I'm guessing you remember it pretty well. How do you think that meeting went?
Well, I think the meeting went okay. I think we, right out of the gates, we had an issue, which was the mayor pro tem and the committee appointments. We were elected the first week, the first Tuesday in April. Our first council meeting was a month later. Well, you know, we didn't have our, the new council didn't have their first committee meetings until July. Well, that's an entire quarter into your tenure. You know, that's crazy.
Right. So, for the listeners, the mayor in Lee's Summit runs the council meetings. He breaks tie votes. But the mayor pro tem is kind of a weird position. And I'm comfortable using the term weird to describe it, because the mayor pro tem makes committee assignments and sends issues to committees. So, it's a pretty powerful job. But in that first meeting, you criticized Mayor Pro Tem Diane Forte for not appointing you to a committee quickly enough. Let's listen to her response.
And so, I would just caution you to kind of wait. I know you're very anxious, and I think that's great, but you know, this is your first meeting, so I would appreciate that, that maybe you ask instead of trying to call me out to do something that's really, it's your first meeting, guy. So, thank you.
Madam Pro Tem, I respect your position equally. And so, when you reference me, please don't reference me as Guy. Reference me as Councilman Moreno.
What are your thoughts on that interaction?
Well, I think it was unprofessional on her part. I think she has a history on the council, not just with this council, but if you look at the last council, she has a history of referencing people in ways that, quite honestly, are not professional for that, for the dais. You know, and here, I have never, I think at that point, I'd only had one conversation ever with her, you know? And so, for her to reference me as Guy, when I received more votes than anybody in the entire city, you know, to reference me as Guy, I thought was really disrespectful.
Well, things changed quickly two months afterward, because it came out that allegedly, Councilmember Forte improperly got city contracts for her own business. This blew up in the media, and you were someone who was very critical of her. But this bled over into the city council meetings. And the July 14th meeting was the low point. This is what you had to say about her at that meeting.
Councilwoman Forte, you know where I stand. I personally do not believe that after the lies that you've told to the cameras, and after the lies that you've told to this body in closed session, that this can continue to go on. But that's a decision that this council has to make.
Here is her response, and I will point out that you are this guy down here.
I've sat here, I've heard all week that this guy down here is going to ask me to resign. He has gone to the EDC, the chamber, people in places that I know, and told them, in places I'm at, thinking they're not going to tell me. I have relationships with people, because they, I do things with people. I am that person. And to come on this council, walk in, and bring these people with you, and try to destroy relationships that I have built in this city, and take my name, if anybody's going to resign up here, it's not going to be me, Mr. Moreno, it's going to be you.
Please, please, please.
How do you think the other council members and staff felt while this was happening?
Well, here's the background context to that for your listeners. On June 16th, Councilwoman Forte was told by the city attorney, there was an issue. And on June 17th, we were made aware of her illegal business deals with the city. We know that staff members, that she requested personally, the pricing, the proprietary pricing totals, proprietary pricing numbers of her competitors. And it's, by all accounts, looks like staff sent it to her. So, she, not only did she have illegal business deals that were not bid out, she was sent, even if they were ever bid, she knew the pricing totals of her competitors. That's, by all accounts, illegal and highly unethical. So, the context of this is, it took four weeks. That exchange you just saw right there, that was four weeks later. She was refusing to acknowledge her illegal business deals, and you hear in that exchange that it's about her. I built the relationships. I did this. Well, I'm sure she has. For me, this isn't personal. For me, it's about government. You know, we should not have politicians profiting off of taxpayer dollars while serving in office. And we now know that on the last council, two of the eight council members, 25% of the city council, had contracts with the city that violated state law, and nobody's been held accountable for it.
Okay, I am not prepared to defend Councilmember Forte, and she's not coming on for a rebuttal, so we won't comment on those allegations. But on October 27th, you posted this on Facebook. "If people are so outraged, why aren't they recalling those who have broken the law or demanding they be fired? There are several."
Yep.
There are eight city council members in Lee's Summit. Who are the several of them who should be recalled?
Well, the council member Forte on this council is the only one that had illegal business deals with the city. The last council had another member of the council who also had contracts with the city that violated city policy and state law. And to date, nobody's been held accountable. I mentioned that post, because the people that are attempting to recall me are direct friends and family members, but certainly friends of Councilwoman Forte, and that's unfortunate.
Uh-huh. You are facing a recall election in April, and that's in part because people are unhappy with your conduct at the council meetings. They allege, and I'm reading here, that you have immature outbursts, that you interrupt commenters, and that you leave the room when people are commenting. How much of that is true? How much is made up? And how much do you think is a misinterpretation of your intentions?
Now, listen, the group that's recalling me made it known, the moment I got elected, that they were going to try everything they could to recall me as quickly as possible. The people you're talking about, six to eight individuals, all of which opposed me during my original election. And they put out just hateful things about my wife, about me, about my kids. And so, what happened is, when I put these illegal business deals to light, you have people that don't live in my district, that are direct friends, campaign managers for Councilwoman Forte and other people, who are now financially supporting this recall group and encouraging them and trying to give them credibility. To answer your question, it's all manufactured. And you have six to eight people out of 24,000 that have a personal beef with Chris for personal reasons. And you have people from outside of my district that want me off the council, because I had the audacity to put an end to illegal business deals, and that's all it comes down to.
So, to ask my question a little differently, can you think of anything you said, or the way in which you said it at the city council meetings, that you would have done differently to give people a better understanding of where you were coming from?
No, I think that I actually was more courteous than what I should have been. And so, I couldn't say right then and there that you had deals that violated state law. Looking back, I wish I would have.
Yeah, yeah. I know you can't speak for her, but if you and Councilmember Forte had not clashed at the very first council meeting, do you think that the public feud between the two of you would have been far smaller than it ended up being?
No, here's, no, here's the thing, is, I did not have anything personal against Councilwoman Forte.
Okay.
But we now know from emails, we know that back in April, after I had just got elected, there was a meeting with council members, and Forte specifically asked the city manager not to allow me in the meeting. I had not even met her at this point. So, here's the bottom line is, she is supported by the establishment, special interest insider people, who have the Good Old Boy Network, who's really quite honestly thrived off of having business go their way. I was supported by the people. I didn't have, I didn't take those people's money. I didn't ask for their money. It's not that I had anything against them. I know a lot of them. I just ran and knocked on a lot of doors and built a grassroots movement. And they are intimidated by that. They know I was going to be a guy that came in, and if something was made aware to me, I was going to put an end to it. And we did. We put an end to their deals.
Okay, well, you and I both know that the people in Lee's Summit are not the same as the people who show up to public comment. It's not a representative sample by any means, but occasionally, over the past several months, there are public commenters who have directly or indirectly criticized your style. We're going to listen to a couple of them now, and in this clip, you are the fourth person to speak.
I have it on good authority that tonight, a couple of council people have an agenda to ask for the resignation of Diane Forte. I can tell you, that's egregious. You've made this a circus, you've made this a show, and now you have the news here. You're giving this a black eye.
Lee's Summit have always been a community of character. That character is shot, gone. Don't know what happened to it, but the community wants it back.
Councilman Moreno has violated this statute by having multiple default judgments against him prior to election. Case number 11CA-CV02862, breach of contract, capital one. Case number 11AC-AC00988, student loan default, Gila of Missouri.
But I think we need to have a discussion about what exactly we want to do in terms of the parameters of public comments. I think we continue to allow a Jerry Springer episode to happen almost every single week now.
So, two things on that. A Jerry Springer episode requires an audience to react and stoke the craziness, which the public commenter certainly did. But you don't have a Jerry Springer episode if no one volunteers to be on the stage acting out. Like, if people stopped breaking chairs over each other's heads, there's no show. And then, second, what exactly did you have in mind for reforming public comment?
Well, just to point out real quick, those took place in very seriously different environments. So, my comment took place after 20 weeks, almost 20 weeks, of the same people coming week after week and rotating and personally attacking me, not for any thing on the agenda, not for any vote, but for personal reasons. The comment by the lady that spoke about default judgments, she's bringing up an $800 credit card from 2010, almost a decade ago. You know, she's mentioned default student loan. Well, she's talking about a cash loan that I took out when I was in college. You know, this was a decade ago, okay? This has nothing to do with today, and that's the problem, is we have these people coming with an agenda. And the agenda is to politically and personally attack politicians on grounds that have nothing to do with actual city business. Now, with that being said, I'm not opposed to criticism. Hey, people have a right to freely attack me however they want, okay? I signed up for it. They have a right to do it. But I don't believe that should take place during city council hours, when the taxpayers are paying for that. We should not allow for political campaigning to take place at the dais. And that's exactly what it was. Louise Horner, this lady that spoke, was, her and a group of people, the same group, were forming recall against me. And so, for every single week, they came to council and personally attacked.
Okay, okay. So, you would specify the topics that people can bring up in their remarks?
No, no, people, no, and actually, I've been very clear. Here's a great example of the earlier question I told you when we talked about procedure. You know, here's a great example, okay? I said that Rules Committee should address the issue of public comments, and that I in no way want to police the comments. Our school district, in our school district, Lee's Summit School District, you have to submit your question days in advance, and they have to approve it. That's over the top.
Yeah.
You know, Lee's Summit Parks and Rec Department, which, you know, gave these illegal deals to Diane Forte and her friends, okay? They, you have to submit that topic, your question, two days in advance. You have to submit it two days in advance in order to even get on their agenda. That, again, is over the top. I don't believe you should do that. What I believe is, public comments should pertain to city business. That's it. But to come up there and totally mislead the public, and tell the public, personal attacks, reading judgments, casenet judgments against me from 10 years ago, when I was in college, that has nothing to do with city business today.
Well, look, I'm wondering, what is the enforcement mechanism on this? Does the mayor rule them out of order? Does the sergeant-at-arms remove them from the chamber?
No, it's a simple, well, yes, yes, it would be the mayor ruling those people out of order, but in order for that to happen, it takes a simple city council rule and policy. We have, here's the thing is, we have that rule. That rule is in place for... That rule is in place for council committees. So on these subcommittees on the city council, that rule's in place. It's just not in place for the regular general session of council. And I think that's wrong, you know? I think people have taken advantage of that and, um, and I think that's wrong. But again, I never called for policing or restricting free speech. I just simply said that when it comes to council comments or, or public comments to the council during session, they need to be about city business because the people don't want to hear this political crap.
You know, one other thing about Lee's Summit that is weird to me is that you do not put a time limit on people's public comments. Someone could stand up there and filibuster for 10 minutes and then the next person could only come up and, and speak for 30 seconds. So is that something that you think should be in place? Maybe a three-minute, four-minute limit on each person, you know, in the interest of fairness?
Well, um, you know, I think that, uh, well, first of all, the council, city council comments, the way we've operated to date, has been to just let people give their comments. And when they're finished, the next person gets to get their comments. And so the, the example that you guys played, the first two comments you played, uh, when you played those three or four people, the first two commenters, right? You're talking about somebody who's the best friend of Diane Forte, who's provided Diane Forte contracts. And you're talking about somebody, a candidate who lost in last election, last April's election, who Diane Forte gave money to, okay? Those two people, now, did they disclose that at the dais? When they personally attacked others on the council? No, they didn't disclose that on the dais.
Well, I don't know of any city council that requires those kinds of disclosures in public comment.
Exactly. And so the point is, is, um, is that, is that first of all, I believe public comments should be about city business, okay? Because the, because April is an election. After the election, we have to go on to governing, okay? And not, not campaign politics. And so that's what the first thing is, should be. The second thing is, is we should not restrict, um, public comments, uh, you know, in terms of time, in my opinion. I think if we are going to, I think, you know, allowing somebody to speak for, you know, three or four minutes is actually a pretty good amount of time when you're actually talking, you know? But we've had people come and speak for 10 minutes. We've had people come and speak for five minutes. And we've listened to every single one of them.
After that July 14th meeting, where you called Diane Forte a liar and she called on you to resign, did you feel more like, oh my goodness, I did not sign up for this? Or did you feel like, well, if I'm going to yell at her and she's going to yell at me from now on, so be it?
Well, you know, it's funny because what you don't hear on the, in that meeting, what you don't see in that meeting is that emails went out by these city hall insiders, right? Emails went out to all of them, directing them to come to council to, to criticize me. And so you had a room of 30 people, all of which have vested interests in making sure that, um, that the Good Old Boy Network stays in place. And, um, they came there and the things that they were yelling in the crowd, like, you know, calling me boy and you better earn, you don't, you, you know, you've got to earn respect before you demand it and, you know, shut up and all this different stuff, you don't hear that on the camera.
People were saying that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, you know, you don't hear that stuff on camera. But, um, but it, but it was, it was honestly, it was mind-blowing what took place. And there were people on the dais who said to me afterwards, I've known these people for years and I've never, I never thought I'd ever see them behave that way in the crowd.